Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I'm Andrea Keen, Chair of the Wayzata School Board, and I call to order our work session for the Wayzata School Board for Monday, March 22, 2021. This meeting is livestreamed on the channel. It's also recorded and will be posted on the School Board page of the district website. On Friday, March 13, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared peace and emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Before we begin, I'll go through a couple of Zoom meeting protocol reminders. Please identify yourself when speaking. If you have background noise at your house, please mute your microphone when listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a live, public, recorded meeting. And in an attempt to ensure all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon for each agenda item. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or a comment. All right, let's get started. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, hello, everyone. Linda Cohen. Here. Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Anita Lucky, here. Sherri Posey.
Here.
C N Falconer.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. All right, great. Thanks. Welcome, everyone. First, on our agenda today, we have, under Human Resource Services and Recommendations, a report on our Wayzata Public Schools Equity Commitment Draft. So I think I will hand it off to Dr. Anderson to introduce Solvay Heredia.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board and our staff and other board members who have are with us here this evening and those listening in. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Solvay Heredia, who's been working with our staff and a number of other key constituents to put together some material related to our equity commitment and has some information to share with you here this evening. So we appreciate all the work that Solvay and those you've engaged with have done. And that'll be an opportunity for you tonight to hear about this important work and a framework that she has assembled, as well as some branding components that she's anxious, as we all are, to share those with you and to give you an opportunity to ask any questions and provide further feedback and input. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Solvay, and thank you so much for your work on this Solvay and all of those who have contributed. I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good afternoon, members of the Board and Madam Chair. It's really been an exciting process to be able to collaborate with so many people and come together around this commitment. And so tonight, we, I say "we" because there are quite a few folks on the call that'll be stepping in to help share about this, and we're just really excited to share this and move forward on some next steps. So we're sharing information tonight about this equity commitment and the journey that's led us here and our hopes for where we're going to go. And then we'll be back on April 12 to seek board approval of this one-page document. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. And is everybody able to see the opening slide?
Yes.
All right, so this evening, we're going to take a look at a few areas, some background on this equity commitment, a peek at the document itself, some statements and messages from our strategy leadership team at the district level, and then a little overview on some next steps, as well as some time for Q and A. And before I actually, let's see, go much further, here we go, adjusting on my screen. So the first piece, a background here, is our mission statement from our strategic roadmap to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in an ever-changing global society. This is really the anchor of what our entire district is about and what this equity work is about. As this board knows, we've had conversations, however, that there's an opportunity gap. We have some disproportional data. That mission at present, for some of our students, is not the outcome that we aspire to for each and every student. So really, the goal of this work is to find a way forward where all of our intentions and our commitments fully match the outcomes that we are striving for to fully fulfill that mission statement for every single member of our learning community. So another little frame here, and some of you may be familiar with the work of Renee Brown. And in her work, in particular in her book, Darren Greatley, she talks about a very human reality. We all have values, and we have a lot of values that we aspire to. And then we have the day-to-day practices of our values. And in being human, in the day-to-day, and all the things we may or may not know, that sometimes there can be a gap between the values that we aspire to live and the values that we live and practice every single day. And she refers to that as minding the gap. And really, as we examine our mission and from our mission and our strategic roadmap, core values that our district has set, that we truly aspire to fulfill for each and every one of our students, where might those gaps be? And examining those gaps courageously allows us to become stronger, to become better. And so connected to that is this quote from Maya Angelou. She shared, "That I did then what I knew how to do. Now that I know better, I do better." And Wayzata has a history and a present of excellence in learning and striving for excellence in all things. And as a learning organization, we're also participants in learning. So that means acknowledging where those gaps might be, learning from them, to be even better, again, for each and every member of our learning community, so that as we know better, we can do better. Additionally, there's this notion of connected autonomy that is very much connected to the work that we've been engaging in with this commitment. And you've heard me share this in past presentations. And really, the idea of connected autonomy is about providing a connected language, learning and understanding, so that we're all together, fully as a community in this, while also having space and flexibility for that autonomy, which is where those unique insights and innovations can grow out of, where we can respond to the various needs and build on the unique strengths of each member of our community. And so as we are moving forward into looking at this equity commitment, one of the primary goals of this equity commitment is to help us with that connected autonomy, to have that anchor rooted in our strategic roadmaps, core values, that provides that common understanding, that connectedness, but also space for us to grow in all of the inspiration and innovation that every individual brings as a part of this community. So with that, we have a one-page document that should also be in the board resources. And this document, you'll see at the top, has a brand name and image. We're all in, speaking to this commitment to keep working towards excellence for each and every, that all of us across every part of our district are in on this work. And then this document has a few key sections to it. So towards the top, you're going to see an introduction and commitments that are really talking to that idea of the practiced and aspirational values and minding that gap so that we can learn better and do better. The next section in the middle is helping unpack that even further, rooted in our strategic roadmap core values with actions that can help us meet those goals, strive and succeed with all of those outcomes we're working toward. And then at the bottom, you'll also see a list of the expanse of this work, because equity work really and truly does mean each and every. And so there's many overlapping and unique combinations of identities that every individual in our community brings and is essential to acknowledge and create space for, as we grow and learn together in this. So with that, at this point, we have members of our strategy leadership team sharing how we are all in on this commitment. And I'm actually going to kick us off this evening, sharing on behalf of Stacy Voss, our Executive Director of Human Resources, who was not able to be here this evening or this afternoon. And she shares that in Human Resources, we're all in. Human Resources embraces the proposed equity commitment as it clearly articulates the expectations that align with our strategic roadmap to support and guide all the work we do to close the opportunity gap and allow each and every student to thrive in our school environment. This commitment will also guide our work with the recruitment, retention, and inclusion of staff in an effort to create a work environment that is vibrant and truly accepting of a wide variety of talents and strengths. Our equity commitment will be instrumental in the work we do and the decisions we make. And so at this point, I will pass it over to Community Ed to share.
Thanks, Solvay. Hi, I'm Jenny Ebert, Director of Community Ed, and in Community Ed, we're all in. So Community Ed exists to support and engage our community through a wide range of programs and experiences. And really, in order to do that successfully, it's essential for us to listen and to partner. And the Wayzata Equity Commitment really helps us to define, for our staff and for our community, how we're going to move our work forward in Community Ed in new ways to really address systematic racism and equities that may exist in our programs. And this equity commitment is a clear guide as we develop a plan to increase and expand our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. I'll add, as Solvay was talking, she said, "As we know better, we do better." And that's really a core value in Community Ed. We apply that all the time. We're always trying to listen really carefully. And this equity commitment just provides us another lens to really do better as we do our work.
Thank you, Jenny. And Wade, Technology.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board, and thank you for handing that off to me, Solvay. Appreciate it. Wade Phillips, Technology Director here. First of all, I want to mention and say thank you to Solvay and the Board and my colleagues as we've gone through the work of just crafting the equity commitments. I think just the process of that has really embodied some of the core values that we're trying to aspire to, learning, growth, productive discomfort, and really trying to transform our values into words and actions. So shout out to Solvay and all her work and leadership for moving this work forward. The equity commitments I think we have in front of us today, they, I mean, they're complex, they're nuanced, they're aspirational. And when I'm faced with such work in what I do here for the Wayzata School District, and just trying to learn and grow personally, and then trying to lead this work forward, both through myself and with my teams and individuals on my team, sometimes I try to organize and simplify what the work is and how we move it forward. So in my comments tonight, I've tried to organize that thinking into a few short categories. The words as one category, the will as a second category, and the work as the third category. So in my comments, for the words, there's power and great power in words and language. They have an incredible potential for creating and promoting a shared understanding, inspiration, and behavior. The Wayzata Public Schools Equity Commitment provides us an accessible framework and language for a positive and purposeful change going forward. The will. To achieve change, we must understand and acknowledge our own individual and collective role in the past and be willing to actively live out our shared values with integrity and accountability. The Wayzata Public Schools Equity Commitment provides us with a clear, deliberate, inclusive, and aligned value statements to drive our actions with excellence. And in the work, learning, growth, and a movement mindset forward makes the work happen. Structuring our aspirations and practiced shared values provides for a system of actions towards positive change. The Wayzata Public Schools Equity Commitment establishes a pathway for us to redefine how we serve all with empathy, innovation, and continuous improvement. It's a culture creating opportunity to engage and empower our team to live out our shared values. I believe we can know better and do better. We're all in. Communications.
Amy, Communications.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amy Parnell, the Director of Communications and Community Engagement. And all of us on the district's communications team are in. Statement that I would like to share with all of you this afternoon is, "Wayzata Public Schools Communications and Community Engagement Team is committed to supporting and elevating the district's equity and inclusion work in the following ways: making equity and inclusion a priority in the district's strategic communications plan; supporting equity and inclusion through the creation of a variety of communications pieces and tools, which include the logo, graphics, website, and many others; sharing the story of our equity and inclusion journey through all of the district's print and electronic communications vehicles; highlighting the stories of our Black, Indigenous, and people of color throughout our school community; helping to create understanding and support conversations among staff, students, parents, and community residents; and finally, finding new ways to communicate effectively with our non-English speakers, both students and families." Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And Jim, Business and Finance.
Yes, thank you, Solvay, for all your work on this matter. Members of the Board, Madam Chair, I represent the teams with the primary functions of finance, facilities, culinary express, and transportation. And we just wanted to share that stakeholders and taxpayers of the district have high expectations related to the administration of the district's finances, business operations, and other operational functions. The district's finance and operation teams are committed to utilizing taxpayer funds efficiently and ethically and to demonstrate outstanding accountability, transparency, competency, and stewardship at every opportunity. Furthermore, the district's finance and operations teams fully support embedding equity, diversity, inclusion, and cultural competency in the services it provides to all students, families, and citizens of the Wayzata District. Thank you, Solvay.
Thank you, Jim. And Jody, Special Services.
We're all in in Special Services. We are committed to equity in all areas, and specifically how equity relates to disability and the intersectionality that it holds with race. We know that outcomes within our system demonstrate the need for thoughtful approaches to eliminate disproportionality that exists in some of the areas that we're currently working on that we know we need to improve, our school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and total disciplinary referrals specifically for our Black students. But we know that bias exists for all students of color as it relates to disability and special education. Secondly, equity can impact our socially-emotional learning work, knowing that equity can be a powerful lever for creating caring, just, inclusive, and healthy communities that support all individuals in reaching their fullest potential. We know that equity cannot be a separate focus area, but needs to be woven throughout our approach.
Jill, morning.
Thank you, Solvay. Good evening, members of the Board. In teaching and learning, we are all in. When we reflect on our equity work, in teaching and learning, it is less about policy and more about a way of being, how we see ourselves, what we know and believe to be true about ourselves and others in our collective history and our future. It's this responsibility in our way of being that will help us ensure the learning of each and every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Corey, Wayzata Education Association.
Hi, can you hear Neil? Excellent. Thank you, Solvay, for all of your wonderful work. Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Anderson, on behalf of the Wayzata Education Association, I would like to add just a few comments to help us tonight. The goal of the Wayzata Education Association is to promote equality, public education experience for all students. We recognize collectively, as well as individually, that we all have work to do to ensure that each student achieves success in Wayzata's educational system. In our effort to continuously improve, we will seek out inequities to correct them. To that end, we will support the commitment to ongoing equity work, and we look forward to the opportunity to support both WEA members and students become the best versions of themselves. Thank you.
All right. And Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Solvay, and thanks, team members, for sharing from your departmental perspectives. And I'd like to share the following. The Wayzata Public Schools Superintendent and Office of the Superintendent are all in and committed to supporting and elevating the district's equity and inclusion work in the following ways: ensuring that equity and inclusion are priorities through the implementation of the strategic roadmaps, mission, vision, core values, and strategic directions; ensuring exceptional student learning experiences and relationships for each and every student; and supporting efforts that strengthen community trust, confidence, and partnership with each and every family. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. This is just an amazing highlight of the collective commitment and wisdom and insight and passion that I've been so privileged to be a part of and am excited about in our next steps. And so with that, to share a little bit here about our next steps. So we'll be coming back in April to seek board approval for this equity commitment document. And then from there, we'll be launching our Intranet site with space to really be speaking to what are some common questions that might emerge in regards to this, and so providing some of the support in regards to that. Also, what are the personal and professional learning resources to support our staff as we move forward in this? Resources for staff that might be leading or coordinating at site level in regards to equity teams and supports. Resources and documents related to our coming District Equity Committee, which I'll speak about in a moment. So our first launch throughout April will be internal to really make sure we are supporting our staff in the next steps on this journey, this journey of connected autonomy. And so then we'll have further updates in April regarding beyond timelines in regards to that more external website launch on this work. So then the other piece I have on here is the structure for a district equity committee. That's another piece that is going to be an essential in the next step, that we are still determining some of the concrete structures for, because the key piece behind our district equity committee is really to have that representation and voice, helping move this work forward and guide us in this work in a collective manner. And so we're finalizing and fine-tuning, what will that structure look like so that we have a high level of trust and community in that space, as well as really strong functionality? Because in a district of our size, there are a lot of voices to have at the table. And so how do we navigate that in a way that's going to help us really have that clarity in the work and be as effective as possible? So this one page is really the start that will help bring that group together, but then that group, that district equity committee, will be guiding the evolution of a larger framework that will develop throughout the work of that committee. And some things that that will include would be some more common definitions that really require the larger committee coming together to work on defining, some guidance around prioritization in terms of some of our action steps, and then focus groups in regards to specific areas where we might need closer attention from a smaller group of that committee. And so the hope would be that that committee could get started during the summer when there's a little bit, hopefully, more space for that community building and trust building. And then also during the summer, have some ongoing learning and support for our leaders across the district as we move forward in this, while also preparing supports and learning for staff for throughout next school year. And then additionally, some more work around our recruitment and retention, in particular with staff of color. And you'll be hearing more about that at the April 26 work session. And then, of course, the ongoing embedment of equity in all that we do. So with that, it is now open for any questions that I may be able to help answer, or perhaps any of the other members of SLT might be able to help speak to this evening. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing so I can see who might have some questions.
Wonderful, Solvay. Thank you so much for the presentation and also for all of the hard work that I know went into getting to this day. I see you as so dedicated to the well-being of our school district, and I also see you as a masterful collaborator. So I could go on and on, but I won't. And so I also wanted to thank the members of Dr. Anderson's Strategic Leadership Team. To hear input from each of you felt really powerful to me, and it really demonstrated the collective commitment that we have in the district. I was pleased to hear all of your stories. Thank you for being here today. And I'm sure that the Board has And I'm sure that the board has lots of questions and comments. I will kick us off with a question for you, Sullivan. You touched on this in your comments, but I wanted you to expand on it a little bit, which is questions I hear in the community or friends that I talk to about the fact that we're working on equity and inclusion and diversity in the school district. Ask me, okay, that's great, but what's the definition of equity, right? I think that's such a common question. And I know that I've asked you this question before, so I know you have a good answer for it. Sullivan, why didn't you define equity on that document, right on the top?
Absolutely. So we currently do have a definition of equity in our core values on the strategic roadmap, referring to meeting the needs of every student. Simultaneously, as we've heard from many folks even this evening, equity is extremely complex as well and nuanced, and there are many components there. And it's really not for any one person or even just one small group to define. And so as we come together and form that district equity committee, that's going to be one of the early and initial tasks for that committee to come together as a community of folks from Wayzata Public Schools, in the schools and in the community, to define what does equity with its nuance really mean to us as a community? And using this one-page document that has unpacked some of that nuance to help us figure that out collectively together. And so that's the plan around formalizing an official definition beyond what we have in our core value definition on the strategic roadmap for what equity is in Wayzata.
Thank you, Sullivan. And I think that really speaks to your commitment to making sure that we have all voices at the table. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, board colleagues, questions and comments, starting with Linda Cohen.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Really thank everybody who's been involved in this very hard work, and Sullivan particularly, leading the charge. And I'm all in. Thanks.
Thanks, Linda. Next, any questions or comments from Bonita Lucky?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Sullivan and team. It is very promising to hear, though we are all in. One thing you said, Sullivan, was the, if I understand this right, a part of the one pager is to establish some common definitions. Is that what, did you say that?
Yeah, some common understanding and expand from them.
Okay, so with that, I will take it some common language will also be established so that we all speak in that same language when we are talking about this work.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. It is very refreshing to just hear the commitment. Thank you.
And if I may to clarify, with the common definitions, we don't have official definitions provided on this one-page document. That is something we will be building with the work of the district equity committee. So that will be coming from here as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, any questions or comments from Chris McCullough?
I would just say thank you, Sullivan, and thank you for all of your collaboration. As a member of teaching and learning, I've seen several iterations of this one-pager. And even though it says draft four in the bottom right-hand corner, I know it's undergone several more revisions than just that. So it's great work. I love how it turned out. I love the "we're all in" statement near the top. That was kind of a new, a new thing that I've seen since the last version. And so I don't have any other questions, just wanted to compliment you and the broader team you've been collaborating with on this great work. And I'm all in as well.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions or comments from Cheryl Polzin?
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much. I concur with my colleagues in what they've said so far. I did have a quick question. Sullivan, you were talking about the Equity Committee, and you gave us just sort of an overview of what sort of it was looking like and how it was shaping up. And you said the first thing was the definitions and common understandings. And then you said something else, and then you said in the focus groups that would come down the road a little bit. What was that middle thing? I missed, I went to write it down, and I just lost what it was.
Support and guidance around prioritization.
Okay, okay, very good. Yep, thank you. I think those are all really important things, and I look forward to how the Equity Committee will pull together and so that we can make sure that we have all voices at the table. I know how important that is to you. You've been talking about that this whole journey so far. So I look forward to expanding out, and I really like launching it internally and getting staff and everybody all on the same page and with the same sort of common language. And the first step, of course, is this document, and I really like how it turned out. So I'm all in, too.
Thanks, Cheryl. All right, next, Sarah Johansson.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thanks, Sullivan. I love that our Equity Commitment gives specifics and actions directly related to all of our core values and our roadmap. And I think we, our roadmap is such a pivotal part of what we do, and this Equity Commitment just marries so nicely in really giving definitions to our values. So thank you to that. To the Strategy Leadership Team, I'll agree with Andrea. Your statements and your words were powerful, and your actions and the things you said really reflect that being all in means that we're all sharing in this, and we're looking at it from every department. So thank you for your leadership and your commitment. Sullivan, I know this was a long and incredibly mindful process to get here, and your dedication to the journey thus far, I think, really gives us a map to the level of integrity and commitment and mindfulness that will help us to move forward in a journey that will certainly be so important, but certainly not always easy. Finally, and this leads to my question. One of my last, and many of our last big events as a board last year, was to sit in front of about twenty to thirty student leaders at the high school. And they were wise, and they were honest, and they were direct. And their words and their comments and their asks have sat with me through this pandemic. And I've really had a lot of time to think. And I think that this Equity Commitment, I get goosebumps, and my voice shakes a little bit as I think that we are developing a tangible thing that we can respond to them. And I think it is a response to many of the statements that our leaders and that our students asked us last year as a board. So I like the process of rolling it out in a mindful way. I'm so excited and would love to talk more about how we're going to bring it to our students and how we're going to show them that we too are learning and growing and being mindful in that. I love this process, and I'm all in.
Thanks, Sarah. Next, any comments or questions from Cian Falconer?
Hi, all. Thank you so much, Sullivan. I cannot wait to get a "we're all in" sort of magnet for my car to go with my Wayzata Hockey Moms sticker. I think it'll be great. I look forward to even sourcing that myself. I think the logo is beautiful. It mirrors our district logo, and the words are beautifully crafted. So really, kudos to you and Amy and her team and everyone you guys worked with. My question is really, I think, more for Chase on this. So these are some very big goals for us to move towards. And I'm absolutely thrilled we're putting them out on paper. But let's say, once we get this thing launched, once that committee forms, when does it become part of performance reviews for Chase and his staff that this document and what it stands for is imbued in everyone's work? And that we look to make sure to see the progress in each of these different leadership areas? When do we start looking at that? Is that a twelve-month? I mean, moving the needle on this, it's going to take a long time. Is it twelve months after launch, eighteen, twenty-four? That's really my question.
Thanks for the questions, Cian. I'm not sure I have a specific answer for that. One thing I will share and that I have valued along the way, and I've shared this with Sullivan and others a number of times, that I've really appreciated how her starting point really was our strategic roadmap, which has been processed for quite some time. The board will recall that we've had our roadmap in place since about 2011. We've reviewed and revised it twice, and it has held the test of time, I think, quite well. And the work around this has really centered on our core values, as Sullivan indicated. And I think that was a brilliant place to bring forth intentional focus to help bring those values to life for us and to give us new ways of thinking about those and internalizing those and utilizing those core values to help us achieve our mission and our vision statements in hopes then that we will see significant movement on our strategic directions. So that's how I see it all tied together. I think to have created a document separate from that would have been useful but less helpful, and perhaps over the long haul, less impactful to student learning and the progress and the work that we have on our sites within the school district. So I don't know that I have a specific date, but I do believe firmly in alignment of the larger strategic roadmap, the superintendent's school board goals, the individual building goals, the PLC goals, and really finding a way to streamline that so that we have better interconnectivity to it. And then, of course, tying it to the performance review protocols that we have for our administrators or building principals and for myself as well. So that's how I would respond to the question on how I can see that at the current time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Emily. I have another question related to the answer you just gave Chase. And now seems like an opportunity for us to have a discussion about where we see this document fitting in to the roadmap that we currently have. And I know that in a lot of our committee work, we've talked about if we see it, like you said, Chase, as a separate document. But that doesn't always resonate because it really is so integrated into all of the other work that we do. So I've heard the word amendment as an idea, an amendment to our strategic roadmap or an addition to our strategic roadmap. I just wanted to put that out there as kind of a question maybe to Sullivan, but also as an opportunity for other board members to weigh in if you have feedback about how you think this new document should fit in with our present roadmap.
I can share since that sharing with me, asking me a little bit there. I do think that a connection, as Dr. Anderson was talking about, how it's unpacking in many ways, those core values, having it very strongly tied to the roadmap will help this be a way of being, like Dr. Johnson was talking about as well. Because our strategic roadmap, in many ways, is the, is like the spine, the core of our organization. And equity, as everybody has said, is embedded and connected in everything that we do and should be about who we are. And so if our roadmap, our strategic roadmap, is the embodiment or on paper, the version of that, then having this connected is important to that, to that forward progress and movement. I think the words amendment, addition, they, for me, are all, all make sense. So I would really welcome a lot of other folks to, from the board, to weigh in with their thoughts.
Yeah, maybe instead of going through the list, if you have thoughts about that, just go ahead and wave a hand, and I can call on you. Anyone else want to weigh in? Cheryl?
Could that be something that the Equity Committee sort of discussed and brainstormed?
The one, we just have a timeline challenge. So this, because this document, as a board-approved document, is sort of a precursor to helping clarify for the committee coming together. So it might be a, maybe a part one and a part two, how we initially go about it. And as we have said, we're learning and growing, so perhaps there's a future iteration of how this is referred to and embedded.
Great point. Okay, anyone else?
Yes. I think that calling it an addition to our roadmap makes more sense to me than an amendment because we aren't really changing the roadmap itself. And to change the roadmap, one would be amending it, but we're adding something to the roadmap. So I would be in favor of an addition or something like that.
Thanks, Linda. Looks like Cian has her hand up.
Hi, I actually might have a question for our board colleague Director McCullough. In legalese, would addendum be the word we're looking for? Or are we just, am I being too fancy?
Was told there would be no legal questions during this work session. To me, an addendum is just something that gets attached to the back, so to speak. I think there's different, you know, I think there's some synonyms that probably all roughly mean the same thing. I do like kind of the fork in the road that Linda created, which is that an amendment suggests a change and an addition suggests something newly added. So I agree with Linda in terms of an addendum or attachment or exhibit or schedule, blah, blah, blah. I think when you add something, then it becomes part and parcel to an existing document, and that seems like the right wording to use.
All right, anyone else have thoughts on that? Okay, great. Thank you for that input. And Sullivan, I have one last question, and I don't know if this question goes to you or maybe also to Amy Parnell. But I don't think all board members had the opportunity in a committee meeting to really hear some of the fun details and thinking behind the logo "We're All In." And I just think, once I heard those details, it made it so clear to me that that logo really reflects the work that we want to do in the district. So I was wondering if one of you could provide just a few details on the great new logo.
Yes, and here I'm going to share so that folks can see it as well on this document. So one of the pieces that we really liked is how the word "all" pops with that gold and the sort of gold arches on either side, almost like an embrace. Because there's a lot that we're seeking to embrace in this work. And it really does connect back to the Wayzata Public Schools logo in terms of the general aesthetic and feel, but also that notion of the embrace. In addition, the blue in the background really speaks to this kind of soft reflective nature as well. While then the more bold, dark letters speak to also bold and action. And all of those are a part of this work. And, you know, we could see that the blue background being something that could potentially, you know, through motion graphics, look like a mirror speaking to the reflective piece. It could also speak to the ripple effect in a pond of how we are all jumping in and growing and learning together and that rippling out effect. So there's a lot of different things that we were excited about with this, including even the word "in," and the fact that "in" really is speaking also to inclusion, which is what we are, what we are after, the practice of everybody truly mattering and believing. which is what we're, what we're after, the practice of everybody truly mattering and belonging and having all the opportunities that we seek for each and every. So lots of possibilities that we see with this. I don't know if there's anything additional that Amy would like to, to share.
Yeah, I think this was just a starting point to, to share the new image with the board. But there, like Solvay said, there are lots of possibilities. And we've kind of thought through, you know, how it would be used on a website page and in existing documents that the board has. And it could be used with either a tagline or headline that says embracing our diversity. So this is just really a starting point for beginning to use that. And I think Solvay really captured well, you know, what, what's, it's intended to communicate.
Wonderful. Thank you for that description. All right. Board members, any other comments or questions that came to you during the discussion before we move on? All right, hearing none. Thank you again, Solvay, for all your work on this and for SLT for helping to support it this afternoon. We will look forward to hearing about it again on April 12th, when we take action on approving this item. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have teaching and learning reports and recommendations. We have one item, which is a learning model and COVID update. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and staff members that are with us today. As we've become very accustomed to, we've had learning model and COVID updates at not only work sessions, but also our regular school board meetings. So today is no exception. I'm going to share my screen. I have, I wanted to share the latest metrics of, just to kind of give you a feel for where we're at currently in those metrics that we've been sharing with you throughout the course of the year. So I'm going to work through these relatively quickly. You know the format and the drill with this. You've seen them bi-monthly for quite some time. But I do like to keep you updated on what the latest numbers are and I give you an opportunity to reflect on those. Following that, I'm going to ask Dr. Johnson and Mr. Lutz to just speak to our current learning models, how things are going. As I know all of you are aware, not sure in regard to our other listeners of the community who may be tuned in. But we've had a staggered approach of bringing a good share of our students back, not all of our students, but right now I think we have 75 to 80% of our students attending in person at their schools. So we still have a number of our students that are learning through our distance choice program and the wonderful work that our teachers are doing with all of our students and their families who have chosen to remain in the distance program throughout the course of the school year. But we do have a large number of students that are back. We began with K through, pre-K through two, back on, I think, January 19th. Grades three through five, February 1st, return to middle school hybrid, February 1st. And then more recently, we've moved into full in-person, five days a week at the middle school. And I think that occurred March 15th, so that's relatively recent. And full in-person, four days a week with the distance day on Fridays for our high school. And there'll be a little bit of shuffling again at the fourth quarter with a few more students returning for in-person learning at the high school, starting with quarter four. Just waiting for my computer to respond to advancing the slides here. All right, there we go. So I share this, this is the traditional 14-day running total for Hennepin County. And you can see kind of a broad range of numbers here with the most recent numbers that were from this time period. I think there may have been one additional update of numbers. I'm not quite sure why that's not showing up on this one, but I think it's relatively consistent with this yet, extending one week further out. I think it might have moved up. And keep in mind that this is the two-week total from two weeks prior. And there has been a little bit of an uptick, as I think you're going to see here in the slide. So the most recent one for Hennepin County as of the 21st, which was yesterday, that number has moved to 24.8. So keep in mind the numbers that I just showed you, those are actually three weeks in reverse. And I'm not quite sure, I think I might have cut and pasted the wrong graph for that one. I apologize for that. But these are more recent, and you can see that they're, for Hennepin County and the footprint of the school district, those numbers have moved back into the mid 20s. So this shows the more recent numbers for those more local communities. You can see we're still in a pretty good place here, comparable to where we were a few weeks ago. It made a little bit of a dip here, and now the average of the communities that make up our school district and adjacent communities in the northwest and west-south suburbs, somewhat in the, kind of in the low 20s, upper teens to low 20s. So a bit of an increase there. We're still seeing about the same, although slightly elevated percentages of new cases reported each week. So you can see the comparison here between the last several weeks, still at about the 1.5% rate here for the most recent set of numbers. And again, similar numbers that you can see here for all the different age groups. I refer to these as school age groups. This first set of data, pre-K, elementary, middle school and high school, maybe into that freshman year of college, again, going up by, you know, a relatively modest rate, somewhat consistent with where we were before. The ideal number for that would be 0%, that means there were no new cases within the last week, or it didn't increase by any given percentage. But you can see back here in the earlier times, you know, we're still quite a bit under some of those higher spikes or peaks that we had before. We continue to monitor this closely. We have an incident command team meeting tomorrow morning. Our strategy leadership team continues to monitor, Leadership Council and all these groups that I've mentioned before. We continue to be thankful also for our district leads and parents who have been instrumental in providing us feedback about our learning models. And typically, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Lutz are both at those meetings to collect feedback. It's been really helpful as we've sought and utilized the feedback that we've gotten from our parents in that group. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Lutz, to provide some updates and share a little bit about our current learning models and I guess anything related to that. I'll not steal their thunder and just turn it over to them. So, Dr. Johnson, if you would kick us off, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Members of the board, good evening. You know, I will knock on whatever is handy here, I guess aluminum. So far, we have really had a very smooth transition to having students back at school. And that's across our system, K-12. And I think in part, and is, that is due to just an enormous amount of collaboration and planning that went into bringing students back. And that is for the district level, across the district level, whether it's teaching and learning, technology, buildings and grounds, culinary, special services, health services, community ed, just across the board, an enormous amount of collaboration. And then at the building level also, and all of the buildings have all those needs, have technology needs, special services needs, transportation, et cetera. And so there's a lot of collaboration and integration that needs to happen, not just across horizontally across the organization, but also vertically. And, and when you're not always meeting face-to-face, which is usually, we're not, we're on Zoom, and working through things, you know, is challenging, exhausting, time-consuming, but everyone is working very hard to get the, to get the work done. You know, my own observations and every day when I walk into Oakwood to hear the little kids out there on the playground laughing and just having the best time, I don't worry so much about where our kids are at. I think they're, I think they're really in a pretty good place. And being back at school is really important and healthy for their development. So we continue to meet weekly with the principals and in teaching and learning and to, you know, continue the discussion as to what's working, what isn't working, what's coming next, what do we have to be prepared for. You know, we're approaching spring break and, and how we're going to manage the traveling will be important. We also have MCA testing coming up that includes all of our students. Our distance also will be back on campus for that event. So there's a lot that still has to be pulled together before the year comes to an end. So with that, I know Dave Lutz has some feedback that he has received from students on their experience. So I'd like to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Anderson, District colleagues. Excited to be able to share, I was, I was actually on Friday with some students at Central Middle School. And so I thought the best, best way to share how's it going is just to get a small sample directly from students. So these were a group of eighth graders that I was, I was in class with on Friday at the end of the day. And I asked them three questions. I said, what, what are the successes? What's going well? What are the challenges so far with, with being back full in-person learning? And then I, we had some extra time and I asked them if they could identify some skills that they feel like they've improved as a result of, of this, this very unique school year. So those are the three questions that we spent some time talking through. And those students had great insights. They talked about things they were, they, they thought were going well, or more gym and physical activity. So you can probably hear this coming through an eighth grader, right? Getting to see their teachers more was a big positive. They, they found it easier to remember what they had learned that previous day or that week because they, they were at school more often, much easier to follow a schedule. That came up several times. They don't have to remember what day they're on or where they were supposed to be. It was just following that schedule for in-person learning. They said less distractions, less Zoom calls, which, which they were excited about, easier to ask a question and get help when you need it, more normalcy. They like seeing their friends more often and sitting with more people at lunch. So again, a lot of this is in comparison to the hybrid model where we had less students on campus. We had a combination of in-person synchronous with at-home asynchronous learning. And so that's the context that, that a lot of those what's going well answers came in. And then they, they mentioned that some challenges, so short passing time between classes. Again, that's by design to try to promote just getting to where you need to go and not lingering in the halls for making sure we're doing our best to keep students separated and, and healthy. They said the days feel longer, feeling tired. A lot of the, it feels like a first week of school comments. They said social distancing isn't always fun. They're getting, one student said, you know, it's taking some getting used to to be around this many people again, all the time. That was an interesting insight. Less self-paced activities. So some students really latched on to those asynchronous days because they could self-paced through the day and really flex their schedule. Whereas now they're, they're going through a schedule. Not as many breaks during the day, the assigned seats at lunch. That's a big one for middle school. Being a former middle school teacher and principal, I knew that was going to be a big one as soon as we knew we had to do it. But that said, students are doing a great job. I was walking through lunch, the lunchroom at Central on Friday, and they're doing an awesome job with it. And then middle, there was a resounding, yeah, after a student said this, they said, we now have to come to school on Fridays, come to physical school on Friday. So they missed the Friday flexibility. Again, that was an in-person section. One group of students, that was their feedback for how things were going with that, that first full week back to in-person learning. Some of the skills they felt like they improved this year was organization, time management, flexibility, and then empathy and growing as a person and appreciating just the, their, the environment they're in. So I thought that was really a good insight from a group of students, directly from a group of students. Again, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, we do have this change for our in-person learning model. For the secondary has been staggered in. That said, we still have distance choice sections running, running strong and, and make sure that, that we're doing everything we can to keep our distance choice learners connected to our, our school and district culture. And so there's a lot of those conversations still happening now, like what, is there any flexibility for the spring in terms of different events or how we might close out the year and just make sure that we take the time to pause and celebrate those successes from this school year and the efforts of, of everybody involved. So we're still having those discussions, but the report-outs are pretty consistent. I think the thing I keep reminding myself is that March is a challenging stretch on a more typical year. And so we, we just got to keep eyes on each other, making sure that we're looking out for, for each other, students, staff, families, and making sure that, that we're, we're able to, to finish the year strong together. So any efforts we can make to encourage each other and, and encourage our staff and our students and, and whatnot, that's, that's all good stuff. So that's my learning model update again, from, from, directly from the mouths of, of middle schoolers, which is great feedback. One other piece I'd like to update on is just, there's a lot of discussion about online learning and what's the future of online learning. And so in Wayzata, just a very brief update that we are digging into this topic. Over the last few weeks, we've, we've had multiple meetings with different teams to do our due diligence around studying this as, as a potential future for our district in terms of one of the, the things that we, we might look to offer. Though, one of the things I know to be true, having been in Wayzata for a long time, is whatever we do, we want to do it well, right? We pursue that excellence piece. And so one of the challenges of this year is the lack of certainty around what next year might look like in terms of what are, what might requirements might be in place for different learning models, what opportunities might be in place for different learning models that, that might not have been there previously. And might there be no changes? Might it go back to more of a typical school year in terms of, of the expectations for in-person learning? And then if you're running online, it has to follow the, the provisions for online learning set by the state. And so that's the challenge is the unknown. That said, we did take some time to, to really dig into this idea that if, if, the, if the pandemic is no longer something that we're planning learning models around, but just looking forward into the future, would we consider more, or would we consider online learning and at what levels? And we did a SWOT analysis on several options as a big team, looking at strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats, so positives and negatives, both from an internal and an external perspective, looking at our organization. And so we did analyze a number of options for online learning. And we really came back to the consensus that following this school year, as of now, knowing what we know now about this school year, where we are going to look at options at the high school level because that's the, the first fit. A lot of the schools that you see, that have districts that you see that have opened up online learning options, started at the high school level because you can target specific courses and course offerings. And, and that's, that's kind of where a lot of districts have started. And so we're looking at furthering our exploration of, of course offerings at the high school level. You may be aware, we did offer this last round of registration, several of our courses with a hybrid option, and I don't want to confuse that with our current hybrid, but basically a course where at least one day per week, a student would be in person and the, the rest of those days, they could be online. That technically doesn't qualify as online learning, but that's an option that we offered. Not a lot of students selected that option. Students either wanted to return to full in-person learning or a lot of times when, when we're finding, when, when students are pursuing online options, they really like that full flexibility that, that a primarily asynchronous online option might provide. So, so looking at specific courses that we offer, specific courses that students might be looking to go on. So so looking at specific courses that we offer, specific courses that students might be looking to go online elsewhere, um different opportunities that that scheduling, we might have a scheduling conflict if we run this course in person. But if we run it online, it might open up some scheduling opportunities for us. Those are the types of of courses that we're really looking at uh for the fall and at the high school level. Um, that's not to rule out uh uh elementary or middle school offerings in future years. Really, we're looking at a multi-year study. So we would start that uh this spring uh studying what what is the future of online learning for Wayzata Public Schools um and really look carefully at each level over time. Um, I've shared this a couple of times that when we started to have more of a uh long-term approach to planning, our conversation shifted from thinking solely about timelines and applications and hitting hitting different windows that we know we have to hit for staffing and and scheduling. And it really shifted to teaching and learning. What would we like this online experience to look like uh if we were to offer it? What do we think the i- uh ideal environment is? What are the the characteristics um that we would expect for an effective online classroom? And so when that conversation shifted, that was really reassuring to me that again, we're we're trying to do things the way that we we are used to in Wayzata, which is aim for excellence. Um, we can do it fast, uh or we can do it right, right? That's Dr. Anderson mentioned that uh the other day with with uh in reference to this topic. So um we're 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 still um definitely uh in the study phase of what might we do next year. We have had some of those conversations about right now it's looking like if nothing were to uh change in terms of what we're allowed to do uh next year or what we're required to do next year in in context of the pandemic from a more typical school year. Um, that that it would be more of a high school focus for next year with further studying. And again, we know there there are um um a variety of of factors to consider. And uh there's no one true perfect solution to this. Um, but that's our our uh work so far, knowing that if there's anything I've learned this year, it's that if everything can change in a matter of a week, right? And so um guidance can change, documents can come out and completely turn everything you're doing upside down. And so we've learned to live with that as as our norm as much as we can. Um, with online learning, there are specific considerations because it is defined in statute. Um, and so if we're not in a peacetime emergency um at any given time, it limits how much uh like people might say, well, can't we just do distance twice like we did this year? Well, that provision is in place because of the peacetime emergency uh created by by uh COVID and and the executive orders and and safe learning plan that are generated um as a result. And so it's it's quite a bit different. I would love, love, love to know what uh the bumpers are for next year, as everybody would. Um, unfortunately, we don't have that information, but um organizations uh uh educational leaders are are really asking for that clarity, saying, hey, it really helps us to plan when we know what those bumpers might be or are. And so we'll continue to ask and wait patiently as patiently as we can. Uh, but that's just some early findings. So that that's the online learning piece. Um, we're continuing to study, but it's looking like a high school focus for next year and then continued study for other levels beyond that for future years. Um, and then, yeah, the the report out for the learning model, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we've had kind of by-level report outs for the in-person uh at prior meetings, elementary and high school. So I wanted to share that middle school piece and and I also talked to principals and their feedback was really reflective of of uh the student feedback. So I thought I'd share that student feedback for you. So thank you. That's my summary.
I would just like to say thanks to Jill and Dave for the overview and and uh appreciate all the work that you and your team and Cory and O'your tuned into the meeting, all the hard work that the teachers have done. And it's just so greatly appreciated. Um, as I indicated in my part of the presentation, we continue to monitor uh the numbers. A number of changes have occurred from uh the Department of Health in the state of Minnesota and the CDC in regard to protocols and guidance. And and that's been kind of evolving throughout the course of the last 12 months, as you're all uh very aware of. And we continue to stay uh connected and receive updates from uh the Minnesota Departments of Health and Education and utilize that as we continue to give consideration to how we're implementing and any changes that we might need to make. So uh we continue to to monitor that. We know that uh spring break is coming up for us and and for neighboring school districts, some probably uh in their break uh last week and continuing for the next two or three weeks. So uh we believe that the protocols that we have in place are are solid, they're reflective of what the guidance and expectation is. And and we're gonna uh hold on to that optimism that the models that we've uh landed on here for the current time and that will uh move to at the start of the fourth quarter will uh stand the test of time and get us through the end of the school year. But as uh Dave said, it's been a year where things change on a dime sometimes. So uh but we'll keep monitoring. We've got a great team. I appreciate Don's oversight uh in the Health Services Department. And uh we'll continue working forward to deliver a great program for our kids. And and I hope for the best with uh how the the school year wraps up. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Thank you, teaching and learning team. Appreciate the update. Um, I love hearing the feedback from our eighth graders. And um it's fantastic to hear that they have the self-awareness to really tell us about how they've improved in their time management and their organization and their empathy. Um, and I'm sure we're all looking forward to the day when they don't have to have a seating arrangement at assigned seating at lunch anymore. That doesn't sound fun.
Madam Chair, if I could just add.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz was negligent in sharing the source of that information. Yes, it was from eighth grade middle schoolers, but he actually covered a class on Friday.
I was wondering about that.
We were short subs and uh Dave stepped right up and uh offered to cover a class. So very uh admirable on his part, yes.
Wonderful. Was it fun to get back in the classroom, Mr. Lutz?
I'm always happy to be in a middle school classroom, any classroom, right? But that's where I got my start. So no, it was fun. Uh, it it was great. So kids are awesome. I'm really impressed with having been uh for much of my career in middle schools and and uh just so impressed with our students. They really want to be back in person and you can tell by their behavior, right? And so just following some very specific rules that if you asked me years ago, would middle schoolers do great with that? I'd be like, man, maybe, but I mean, they they did awesome. They all understand uh that the more we work together to follow social distancing, to follow procedures, uh the more it means that that we have a better shot at staying in person. So really impressed with our students, our staff. Um, everybody's working hard. So yeah, it's it's a fun to fun to see it firsthand.
Thank you. And and that detail, Dr. Johnson, really points out how everyone in the system is really being asked to um kind of go above and beyond and be flexible and do jobs they don't normally do. Um, and so I want to thank everyone, obviously, I guess administrators too, but also teachers and pairs and everyone who's working in our buildings. We know that you are being very flexible um and um doing lots of things that we don't normally do. Um, Cory, if you're still on, if you could pass that on to the teachers, we really appreciate their flexibility. We know it's still really hard work right now. So um thank you to our teachers. Um, let's go through the list and see if school board members have comments or questions. We'll start with Sarah Johansson.
Hi, thank you. And I would underscore Andrea's comments to uh Dave for filling in, but to all of our teachers and pairs about about stepping in and and wearing multiple hats. This is a, this is continues to be tough and I so appreciate it. Um, so I'll be the first question and I'll have a hard question, but all the, but you brought up Fridays and you brought up next year. So um that lots of questions on the streets are, will the high school consider keeping Fridays as asynchronous learning days? I don't anticipate that you will have an answer for me right now, but I'm just wondering if what what the conversations are around that.
Thanks. I don't have an answer for you. Um, I do think um it's one of many factors that we need to take some time this spring to really reflect on the year, right? And say, we did a bunch of stuff that we might not typically do. Some of it might have stuck, you know, and and what what change in our practices do we need to look to retain? So um there might be some themes within that, though, that we're getting at. So what about Fridays? Why, you know, why would we consider that? And so there's there's a lot of good um, you know, uh discussion to be had there um that might we make, you know, make some some relevant change moving forward with with how we um how teaching and learning works. And so while I don't have an answer today, I think it's definite, you know, it's it's definitely worth consideration. Um, in terms of what about Fridays? You know, is it the the um the additional student independence, the uh flexibility to be able to, you know, manage um that work from that week and and uh set your own schedule? And so there might be themes within there that we can look to build within um our our school week that that I know our high school administrators um are would definitely have uh feedback and comments on. The other flip side of that coin, too, is with our staff. Our staff have really been able to collaborate in ways um on those Fridays that are pretty unique. And I know when we switch from um off of that Friday model at at our other levels too. Um, there's a reason for that, but the the collaboration uh flexibility that that was existed on those days was it it helped us get through this very challenging um set of of circumstances. So I don't want to just say absolutely not, you know, or good luck. Um, I do think there's things to consider within that, though, layers of why. And really digging at that why is something that we we need to make some space for this spring.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I I think your whys and your questions are all spot on. My only addition to your list of whys that I would add is how do um we integrate our strategic direction of health and well-being when we start to uncover some of those whys too? So I know you're on it, so but thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could just add one more thing, um uh Director Johansson, we will we'll need some additional clarification from the state of Minnesota uh just around the school calendar and required time in school. While some exceptions have been made now because of the pandemic and the emergency order, it's not clear whether those would continue um when that no longer exists. And so there's kind of a different set of rules we're allowed to operate under right now. So those are other things we need to get clarity from MDE.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments from Cheryl Colzin?
Thank you. That was really great information to have. So thank you for all your hard work in doing all of these different models and just keeping us on the rails this year. Um, it maybe you don't know the answer to this, but maybe you do. So around that piece, you're waiting for MDE to tell you what the direction will be? Or do they have to actually pass pass legislation that would allow you to continue a distance option in the same vein if the peacetime emergency were to be ended? I don't know if that.
Yeah, I can take it. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, no, just there's there's some things that uh would need to be addressed it through MDE and the programs that they that they support, um expectations that they have. And there's the additional things that the legislature would need to um address and certainly in terms of a calendar.
Yeah, there's some bills that have been proposed right now and and um are are uh finding their way through through uh legislation that because it it online learning is clearly defined in statute, um that it's my understanding that if uh you know, the peacetime emergency and the safe learning plan that accompanies that were not uh present, that it would require legislative act action to change the requirements for online learning uh for your future years. That's my understanding. Um, and so I'm I might be way off and and uh if I am, I'll put a correction in at a future meeting. But that's my understanding right now. Dr. Anderson, I don't know if you have a good handle on that or if that's reflective of your understanding too.
I would just affirm what you shared, that uh you know, I think it's in progress and we'll learn more as we uh uh move closer to summer months and have a better picture for it. So I don't have any additional information, nor do I think anyone really does, but we'll stay tuned.
Okay. I'm just asking because we're currently going through our legislative meetings with our district legislators and anything we can do to help um move something along so that you get information sooner rather than later. I don't think anybody in St. Paul understands how much ahead of time we need to plan, so.
I think, you know, one thing I would share is the greater flexibility we have with that, the better. And there is a real formal cumbersome process to getting it approved, as Dave alluded to. But uh if there would be a way to have something that would be more reflective of what we were able to do in the past year, that would be something that would be more easily implemented. But um we'll have to stay tuned and see how that all evolves.
Okay, well.
Flexibility is the key, I think.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything further, but I sure appreciate everything that's going on. It's it it is um refreshing to hear how I know it's not easy. So it sounds like, oh, yeah, everything's wonderful, but I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any questions or comments from Cian Felkner?
Hello. Thank you so much for that update. Um, I just am looking for a small piece of clarity. Uh, Mr. Lutz, it sounded like um the district is first taking a look at what MDE is saying. And then if we would be offering an online option, high school be first. And then I'm extrapolating, middle school would be next, and then the elementary is a distant third. I'm asking because I um I've gotten two parents recently who just asked if uh elementary was on the table for next year. And is it safe to say that right now, barring an a continuation of the executive order, we're most likely going to be focusing on the high school and it options with them rather than middle or elementary?
Yep, that's an accurate statement and probably following spring break, Amy Parnell might correct me. We would look to communicate that um um with our families, with a consolidated communication. Again, there's a lot of ifs and and um uh conditions within that. So creating a very concise, easy-to-understand communication around this topic is challenging when it's neither concise nor easy to understand. Um, so but yeah, um, your your comments are accurate that if not, if if uh nothing were to continue, um that right now, tentatively, we're looking primarily at high school-specific courses. Um, and those courses being course-specific, not just saying, hey, all of our courses have an online option, but being course-specific about um targeting some offerings, um seeing if those courses fill. And then if they don't fill, what options do we have um for for uh running, running those sections online? The other thing we have currently at the high school is that those blended offerings. So we need to take some time to to talk about how these courses kind of interrelate, right? Um, and then there's some exciting uh uh innovation that can happen as a result of of this online shift with offering some courses that, again, maybe historically wouldn't run. Um, we're looking at at uh several opportunities here um that if we change the mode of the course, it 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 might not only just respond to a a couple of requests, but it might actually have a course run that wouldn't otherwise. So um we we want to make sure we're doing that in sync with our high school schedules because because what we don't want to do, and this is our concern about rolling something out too fast as well, is to to uh this take away from anything else that we're doing, right? We want to be able to offer that high-quality experience. Um, and you know, personally, I I'm really excited about uh if if the peacetime emergency is gone, it means because we've had significant drops in numbers um with the pandemic and excited for students to return to the classroom and um really, really engage in that in-person learning. That's where we've invested for a really long time. Um, it's what we're we the the model that that we have the most experience with. Um, but to do that more methodical approach to studying options, um to make sure we know, you know, would we offer if we were to offer something at the elementary level, would it be K-5 or would it be 3-5? And that carries a very different set of, of decision-making or rationale around that. And that stuff, we need time to really sort through because we want, we want the Wayzata version of whatever we do. We don't want to just chase, um, you know, some, this online label and not do it really, really well. We want to do it well. We want to do it right. Um, and so we have some much more work to flesh that out further. The thing we are confident about is that there, there are likely some opportunity at the high school with some specific courses.
All right. Thanks, Cian. Any questions or comments from Bonita Lucky?
Just a big thank you and nothing additional for me. Thank you.
How about Chris McCullough?
Colleagues took all my questions, so I don't have anything else. I will compliment Dave on jumping into the classroom. I know he likes being there, but the additional feedback that he gathered, uh, kind of real time on what our eighth graders or some of our eighth graders are thinking is, it's really helpful to know kind of what's going on on the ground, so to speak. So do appreciate your efforts. So thank you.
No problem. It, it was not a big deal. Trust me. Uh, I just really like being able to, to connect with students, but I don't want that to take away from what our teachers are doing in the classroom every single day. So that's, that's definitely, uh, it was, it's fun to be around and be in and, and just excited to be able to help out where we can.
Point, point well taken, and I also appreciate the work in the future. So thanks, Tim.
All right. Linda Cohen, any comments or questions?
Just the same as everybody's. I really, really appreciate everybody's hard work and their ability to pivot and change and all this. So thanks, everyone.
All right. I think that's it for this agenda item unless anyone else thought of any new questions as we were discussing. No? Okay. All right. Well, it's 5:30 and before we move on to business and finance services, let's take a two-minute stretch break. I'll see everyone back at 5:32. Okay. Thank you. All right. Welcome back everyone. Uh, next on our agenda, we have business and finance services recommendations. And our first item is finance and facilities discussion. So at this point, I will hand it over to Jim Westrom.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And just a reminder for everyone that the district has two committees that deal with finance and facility matters of the board. The finance committee is actually led by the chair, Sarah Johansson. And then also we have Linda Cohen and Andrea Keen in the finance committee. And then also our facilities committee is led by Cheryl Palzine with Chris McCullough and Andrea Keen and Cian Falconer acts as a backup and Ashley was at our meeting this month. So I just want to get the entire board up to speed and I invite the two board members, Cheryl Palzine, as well as Sarah Johansson to make any additional remarks regarding your respective areas. Let's, let's fast forward real quick. Um, I know the next agenda item talks about our school photograph, RFP. I always like to make sure that the entire board is aware of anything that we're going to ask the entire board to give consideration to approving. So at our next meeting on April 12th, the board or the finance committee is going to be seeking approval for a school, school photograph vendor. And that vendor is Kement Mueller and they're a local company. And we actually went through a full-blown RFP and we had a large group, we had evaluators, and then we also had advisory roles. And the recommendation to the administration is to actually begin with Kement Mueller mentor to a two-year contract starting in 2021. We believe that this will provide a good value to the community and to the students as well and the, and the teachers. Maybe just a couple of things as a part of the services, they actually provide us with all the photos that we use for our student information system and for our student IDs. And actually the student pictures and photographs will also be used in conjunction with our yearbooks. And then just another note, we already have been using Kement Mueller in some form for athletics and activities. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond. And Sarah Johansson, if you have any comments as the finance committee chair, can share with us as well.
Yeah, I'll just add super fast. Thanks, Jim. I was really impressed when, um, and this is far more than the extent of tonight's meeting, but I'm sure someone could follow up with you or for anyone from the finance team. The extent of the review that we went through when we were looking at the RFPs and the number of people and how school photographs in addition to, you know, the, the nice pictures that everyone, that all the parents want, but how it impacts our safety and security and our connections with athletics and other things. And so I just want to say it, thanks to the committee from the finance department as well as, I know a number of the district representatives that, that were so comprehensive beyond what I think a lot of us would envision would be in a, in a photo RFP. So thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westroom, and thanks for those extra comments, Sarah. Let's see if anyone has comments or questions. Any comments or questions from Bonita Lucky?
So is this, uh, just from my understanding, is this different from life touch or that has nothing to do? Is that a change? Will this be a change?
Uh, yes, this will be a change. Life touch was actually evaluated as well, and they did quite well. The committee actually approved Kevin Mueller at this point.
Okay. All right. No, that was just my one question. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonita. Linda Cohen, do you have any comments or questions about this?
No, appreciate all the hard work on evaluating the various companies.
Cheryl Palzine, any questions or comments?
Just to thank you, it was a really involved process and I was impressed when I heard how they went about it and everything. So I'm confident that it was a great selection. So thanks.
Chris McCullough.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Cian Falconer.
Ken Miller did a great job on hockey photos. Very excited about taking all the kids' photos. Thank you guys for going through an RFP to find something, especially a local company. That's great.
All right. And Sarah, any further questions or comments?
No, thanks.
All right, Jim. I think we're all set then. Thank you.
Yes, and I will, um, I would like to share one additional comment is that in the past, the district or the PTAs or PTOs would receive some type of rebate. And actually, Kement Mueller was so kind and decided that they would actually, instead of rebating anything to the, to the school district, would actually provide complimentary photos to students in need. So really excited about that. Um, and we think that's going to serve the district very well in the future. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great news. Okay. Then the last item is the finance and facilities discussion.
Yep. And, Jim? Yep. And I have three items included in, in this item. The first one I would like to share is Stacy Voss, our executive director of human resources, actually is leading up our health insurance bid process. You're probably aware that Minnesota statute 471, 6161 requires that all school districts go out for what we call the HIDA or Health Insurance Transparency Act bid. And we're just wrapping that up. Next, actually tomorrow evening, our insurance committee will meet and accept the proposal and then the board will be asked to approve the proposal. At this point, it's beyond the scope to share any more details, but Stacy will be able to share those details with you. And what I can share with you is that we have a long history with our self-funded health insurance and self-funded dental plans of having a high level of engagement with our employee groups. We have employees from each of the collectively bargained units within the district as well as our affiliated employees. So wanted to just give you a quick heads up. So that's not a surprise. And once again, Stacy Voss will be sharing that information at the next board meeting and seeking approval. So thank you for that business matter. Um, then the next item I would like to just share is we thought with the finance team that it would be important to talk a little bit about some of the federal dollars that are flowing to the school district. And so last week, we actually did meet with the finance committee. We talked a little bit about the three primary funds that are, that are currently flowing to the district. And now you're probably aware that there is another one with the recent passage of the $1.9 trillion federal package that was approved. But the first one I wanted to share is kind of a standalone. There was one fund called the CRF or Corona Relief Fund, and that provided about $3 million to the district. And we expended those dollars by December 31st in accordance with the guidance. And primarily we spent those dollars on PPE, enhanced cleaning and additional nurses and healthcare services between through June 30th of 2021 or 2020 that was attributed to the coronavirus and the pandemic. So those dollars have been fully expended. We also had S R one, and when I say S R, I'm sorry, that's an acronym. I, I think I'm just going to say it. We also had another pot of money that was worth about $600,000. And we're using those dollars for nurses through January 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2021 because the CRF funds were fully expended and also enhanced cleaning. Would like to just share that the second, uh, or the next pot of money, so that was the CRF, which was one-time funds, then the S R funds of about 600,000. And then the S R two funds are the third pot of money that we're speaking about today is going to bring in about $2.6 million. However, we are planning to use that $2.6 million to help soften the blow of the nearly $5 million deficit that we incurred. You're probably aware, um, as with an entire board, that we anticipated opening up the school year with 12,536 students and we actually had 11,962. So we immediately attended or we immediately began to have costs containment strategies and froze a lot of expenditures and refrained from additional hires. However, we're still projecting that we'll have about a $5 million deficit. And I'll be sending out a memo to Dr. Anderson and Ashley Winter, and she'll send that out to all board members. So you have a copy of this. But basically that $2.6 million we're planning to use to soften the impact of the $5 million deficit. I would also just like to mention that the cost of providing childcare to essential workers was not reimbursed by the state or by the federal government to the school district. So our community education fund is anticipating to spend $2.5 million in 2020, 2021 in providing these services. And just so you know, we also provide, we also expended $1.28 million last year in 2019, 2020. So I know that Cheryl Palzine and Andrea Keen have been very active with our legislators. And I do have information to provide to them that they can share with our legislators to see the impact. Our food service and culinary express fund also required a 200,000 or more than a $200,000 transfer to get it to zero as of last year, or it was in a deficit position. So those are the main messages with our finance items. We do know or preliminary estimates are that the 1.9 million trillion, not trillion dollar stimulus that is planning to come, we should probably receive about twice as much as we did in the latest. So we're anticipating that that could be between four and $5 million. Once again, um, I think I've shared with you that we have experienced quite a bit of deficits in providing childcare services to essential workers without having a revenue source to cover that. But there are some additional caveats. We need to use some of these dollars for learning loss. And, and I think we'll be exploring that in greater detail in the future. So just wanted to get everybody up to speed. Sarah Johansson is the treasurer. Do you have any remarks that you'd like to make about the finance meeting that we had?
Um, not really, Jim. Thank you. I, we too, as the finance committee, I feel like we go over this every month. We ask you to explain it a bit to us again and, and just to seek some clarity. So I guess I would encourage board members to continue to have questions or have some wonderings to, to reach out for us. It's been helpful that, that the finance department has kept the committee just kind of updated and understanding it. And, and of course, I know we've also brought this up at the CFAC and, and just making sure that our, that our community of advisors too are aware of, of where we are and, um, and our plans. So thanks for that.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Let me see if board members have any questions about the information you presented on the federal dollars. Sarah, you just talked. Let's see. How about Cheryl Palzine? Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, this was great information and I look forward to seeing the memo that has a little bit more detail just so that we can speak with authority to our legislators about what we actually need. And what, you know, it sounds like that a lot of money was sent from the federal government. I don't think anybody has a clue how much went into trying to navigate COVID. So thank you for all of those things.
All right. Cian Falconer, any comments or questions?
Hi, just a small question. Um, Mr. Western, you noted that we have a $5 million deficit and 2.5 million of unreimbursed childcare costs for frontline workers. Is the 2.5 a component of the 5 million or is the 2.5 incremental to the 5 million?
Yes, thank you, Director Falconer. Um, actually that's an addition. So I should have. Yes, thank you, Director Falconer. Actually, that's an addition. So I should have provided some clarity. The 5 million is in the general fund and the 2.5 million is in the Community Education Fund. Under current statutes, if the Community Education Fund goes into a deficit, we have to come up with a plan within 12 months to cure that deficit. And if we're unable to, we need to make a transfer from the general fund. So indirectly, it could actually mean that our general fund, instead of being at 5 million, is actually at $7.5 million in a deficit position. However, once again, you can have a high level of confidence in the administrations throughout the district. I know that we've basically frozen as many things as we've can and deferred some of our expenditures. So that will come through in the strong financial position that we were on July 1st when we started the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Bonita, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Chris McCullough.
Nothing from me. Thanks for the overview. I'll wait, wait for the additional details. Thank you.
And Lynda Cohen.
Thanks. I, I was just thinking, Jim, I don't know whether you were going to send that memo just to Cheryl and Andrea, who do such a great job with our legislature, but it would be helpful, I think, for me and probably other board members to get it. The more I get all this straight, the more helpful it is.
Thank, thank you. I actually have it on my screen, but I thought in the, to be respectful of people's time, I'll just email it to you right after this meeting.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jim. We'll watch for that. Okay, back to Jim for finance and facilities discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So the facilities committee actually met last week as well. And Cheryl Polzin loved that meeting and Chris McCullough was unable to attend. So C. Ann Falconer actually was the alternate, along, along with Andrea Keen. One of the things that we did talk about is you're probably aware that we have been closely monitoring the district's enrollment. And it has come, or it continues to appear that we will need additional middle school capacity in the 2025, 2026 school year. You're probably aware that we have seen a reduction in the number of early elementary grades, that would be K3, but pretty much our secondary grades have continued to remain fairly robust. And even our fourth and fifth grade classes, and when I say classes, the entire grade level continue to be strong. So at this point, we are basically planning to start reaffirming the enrollment numbers. We have been working with the cities to get building permits. And if we were to talk to Kristin Tollison, our Director of Administrative Services, her conversations with each of the cities is that the permits continue to come in pretty robustly and are in close alignment with what was projected several years ago. I would like to just give board members, and perhaps Cheryl can lead this, just some thoughts about the surveys that Amy Pernell did with Peter Leatherman on the three different surveys, how well we're serving our students, if our students anticipate coming back, and the happiness with the educational programming in the school district. I'll just share quickly that my observations is that many of the students who have left the district have found a good fit for them, but it sounds to me like those students that weren't impacted by the pandemic will continue to seek to attend the ways out of public schools. And so we are beginning to re-project our enrollment for the next five years, and it continues to be strong. I'll just make one more comment because I have the numbers in front of me. Even seven years ago in 2014, I can't believe it's 2021 right now, but seven years ago in 2014, our kindergarten classes were 600 to 700 students. Other than this year, due to the fact that we had a pandemic, most of our elementary grade levels are going to be in the upper 900s, which means that those students are going to migrate into the middle schools and eventually the high schools. So at this point, I think what I'm seeking from the board is just affirmation that it's probably time to roll up our sleeves and really give careful consideration on how best we're going to accommodate the students who are already residing within our district or potentially even attending schools in our schools as they approach middle school level. So Cheryl, if you have any remarks, I'd be happy to turn it over to you.
Sure. I, you know, I concur with everything that you said. I think that sort of the timeline that we have been on to try and ascertain how much space we were going to need, particularly at the middle school where we're finding that's the highest challenge for us right now at Central. I think we need to just pay very close attention over the summer, how things are going, if we haven't seen any sort of a slowdown in the building permits and the building that's actually happening. I think coupled with the information from the surveys, and, and I think Peter Leatherman was saying that usually when people leave a district, you know, they don't come back, but, but the indication was that well over half, you know, really wanted to come back when they could. So I think that we may see a little bit of a dip, but I mean, that's just pure speculation. No one will know, nobody has a crystal ball. But if we just look at the numbers we actually have physically in our buildings, we, we still are squeaky. So I think we need to move forward cautiously, paying attention to all these things and, and set in place things so that we would have capacity relief by the 25, 26 school year, unless somebody has other ideas or information that would change our mind on that. So.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Cheryl. Let me go through the list and see if board members have any input, starting with C. Ann Falconer.
Thank you for the update. Now, ready to roll up our sleeves.
Oh, ready to roll up our sleeves? I didn't understand you at first. Okay, great. Chris McCullough.
Nothing from me. Thanks.
Sarah.
I, I probably sound like a broken record, but I do want to say I, I agree. I appreciate the work of the facilities committee and thanks to the finance team also for having the thoughts about our enrollment growth and, and the, even the feedback from the survey and the CFAC agenda as well, which we covered last month. So we appreciate our citizens' feedback in that too.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Lynda.
Nothing, nothing to add. Thanks.
Bonita.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Cheryl, anything else?
I think we covered it.
All right. All right. Then to wrap up, I also just wanted to thank our facilities partners, Valerie Peterson and Lene Shoen from WOLD for joining us this evening. And I, hi, Lene. Thank you for staying here. Jim, and I, just to wrap up, I certainly support the timeline and what you've said makes, makes a lot of sense and builds on some of the momentum, I think, that we had going prior to COVID. And now with COVID, I just think we obviously need to keep such a close eye on our enrollment numbers and, and keep planning for the growth that we know is happening in the district. So does that give you what you need, Jim, to move forward?
Yes, it does. So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Actually, what we're looking at is we worked with our Citizens Finance Advisor Council. We've worked with Barb Nickel and Amy Pernell, and then we've also worked with our construction partners. And we will be proposing a calendar that will be presenting to the board on how best to move forward so that we can accommodate that growth that we're anticipating in 2025, 2026, or actually the need for additional space no later than that time. One additional comment that I neglected to mention is that we also believe that October 1st of 2021 will play a significant role in how we move forward. So we'll need to continue to give careful consideration to see how many students actually join us in the poll. So, thank you. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Jim. And just to clarify, October 1st is an important day because that's the official day of declaring our enrollment for that school year, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. I sometimes forget that. We know that, but the public would like to know that. So, thank you.
Great. Okay, board members, before we wrap up, any further questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, that concludes, that concludes our, our work session for today, Monday, March 22nd. Is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Cheryl. I so moved.
This is Lynda. Second.
All right. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
C. Ann Falconer.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Lynda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. All right. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for